Ingram High School. This proposal requests approval of the naming of Ingram High School Basketball Court, not the whole gymnasium, just the basketball court itself in honor of Mr. Walt Milroy, former basketball coach and long-term, longtime teacher. Principal Flo made the recommendation, wrote the letter to Dr. Nyland as prescribed. The fiscal impact of this will be $400 to paint or install the lettering on the court This proposal strictly follows Board Policy and Procedure 6970, and we've gone through that process. Section 2, naming of a portion of a school building, in this case, the gymnasium's basketball court. So this action has come out of the community, through Ingram High School community, and now is coming to you as prescribed. And Principal Flo is going to talk to you about Sections 7 and 11 in the bar.
Thank you. Walt Milroy, longtime teacher and coach in the Seattle Public Schools, was a three-sport athlete at Roosevelt. He taught from 1947 to 1959 at Queen Anne High School, coached there as well. 1959, when Ingram opened, he transferred to Ingram High School where he taught history and was a counselor until 1980. Walt Milroy, for many years, was Seattle, was the state's winningest coach. He also coached the 1969 state championship team that Governor Jay Inslee played on as well. Mr. Milroy is currently in his mid-90s and currently still resides in the Puget Sound area. Our goal is to be able to honor him at one of our last home basketball games here in early February. Mr. Milroy's record was 278 wins and 159 losses, again, to become one of the state's most winningest coaches. In, through this process, this was approved of and supported by the building leadership team, the staff, the student ASB, and community residents, as well as the governor of the state of Washington. And many of, I believe you have many of the letters of support with you. Upon the passage of this, again, we will place Mr. Milroy's name on the court surface at Ingram High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Director Burke.
Thank you for sharing that. That's a great success story, and I appreciate the honor. I'm curious, the decision to name the court versus naming, you know, the gymnasium or a, you know, what was the decision process around that?
Thank you. The decision process was that Walt Milroy was, again, an outstanding basketball court coach. We do, in looking at the equity issue, we also have one of the state's winningest female volleyball coaches that potentially in the future could be involved in the naming of a part of the volleyball court as well.
Thank you.
Director Blanford?
During the discussion of this item by the Operations Committee on the 17th of November, one of the issues that was brought up was the potential for the governor to actually be there for the naming ceremony, and there was a question about that. Do we have any clarification?
No clarification at this time. Of course, he will be invited and has a number of times come to Ingram High School in support of not only the school but the athletic program, and has come to the school with Walt Milroy, and they are in communication, and I'm sure he would love to attend.
Just one comment. I want to appreciate you for the broad base of support, that the documentation that you provided that indicates that lots of folks across the spectrum of your school community have endorsed this idea and are supportive of this idea. It makes it a whole lot easier to vote yes, so I want to thank you and appreciate you for your work in stewarding that effort.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. So our next item, item number two, amending policy number 2415, high school graduation requirements.
Hi, Dan Gallagher, Director of Career and College Readiness. So the state law changed requiring district students in the class of 2021 to earn 24 credits to graduate. The current requirement is 21 credits to graduate. Students in the class of 2021 are current eighth graders, so they'll be registering for high school classes soon. So the motion to amend the policy is to change it so that it is just consistent with state law. If you refer to the red line version, it basically just switches the number required from 21 to 24. And I'll note, this was discussed in the September 28th boardwork session, October 10th and November 14th, CNI committee meeting.
Are there any questions or comments? Director Harris.
So many months ago, we talked about having planning principles and trimester, five credits, five classes a day, et cetera, and we heard a lot from our constituents that that would have pretty significant impact. Additionally, it would have significant budgetary impact, as I understand it. Where are we on that continuum? And where are we on credit retrieval opportunities? Because this is going to, as I understand it, compress the requirements for graduation, and if we miss a class, if a student misses a class, then there will be real difficulty in making that up. Can you speak to a little of that, please?
Sure, yeah. So a couple things, kind of timeline of how we've gotten to this point. Last year and even before that, there was work on analyzing, what are we going to do to make sure all our students have the most opportunities to be successful? Task force was created last year called the 24 Credit Task Force, and that's been published and is on our website. It was the September 28th work session with you that we went through those recommendations and where we stand on those. In broad strokes, we are, we have those recommendations, and so now we're analyzing feasibility and kind of deeper dive in, for example, schedule. So that's where we are right now. You also mentioned planning principles. So West Seattle High School Principal Ruth Medsker and Nathan Hale High School Principal Jill Hudson are both on a half-time release, that is, their duties in the building are covered by an assistant principal, where they spend half their time, or the equivalent of a 1.0 principal FTE, working with the entire high school principal corps, as well as representatives from the middle schools principals, to look at actually all of the recommendations and to think about, okay, we're trying to follow these recommendations for these credit numbers, but just what opportunity do we have here to think about? What are we trying to produce in our students? Kind of how are we trying to re-envision, you know, what is high school about? So that's the work going on right now, as well as then the kind of more logistical thinking about schedule and costs. I mean, that's very real. I'll say even just last week, they and other principals, as well as I believe there was a teacher and guidance counselor, met with people from Kelso School District, which is a school district that's on the trimester, or three-by-five, as we say, that's five periods a day, three trimesters, to learn about, so what are the implications and what are the things we don't know about? We can pencil out, the numbers work this way, but what else do we have to learn? What else do we have to pay attention to? That was actually just last week, and there are other districts around that are, that have been on the trimester. There are also other neighboring districts that are considering a move just like us. And I want to highlight, those recommendations were recommendations. It's not a foregone conclusion, and we're still considering that, even though it was the most recommended. That's what we're looking at right now for feasibility.
Any other questions or comments? Hi, thank you. Okay, the next item is amending policy 4237, advertising and commercial activities. This came before the Ops on November 17th. Was there anything that the Ops Chair would like to share about this item?
Sure, be happy to. This item was considered by the Operations Committee on the 17th and moved forward for approval.
Ronald Boy, a Senior Assistant General Counsel. This policy amendment makes a couple changes to current Board Policy 4237, advertising and commercial activities. Our current policy permits advertising on district property, on high school fields, stadiums, and scoreboards. As a result, we found that that provides some inequities amongst all of our sports teams. Teams such as tennis, track and field are unable to receive the potential benefits that may come from advertising revenue. As a result, the suggested change is to remove the terms "school fields," "stadiums," and "scoreboards," replacing with "athletic venues" to allow an equitable opportunity amongst all of our sports teams. Additionally, there are some grammatical errors, changes that were made to the policy, and also the addition of marijuana to the prohibited advertising that would be allowed.
I have a question. So the advice to change the wording to "athletic venues" from the more specific "field," "stadiums," and "scoreboards," where did that advice come from, or what is that based on? What drove that?
Well, we found, or actually, the Athletics Department had voiced concerns that they were receiving requests from potential sponsors that didn't, that seemed appropriate but didn't fall into the policy, like such as a request from a potential sponsor for a basketball game that wouldn't be allowed under the current policy, and they sensed some unfairness there. Whereas if it had been a football team, the advertising would have been totally fine under the policy. And so we felt that in discussing the options, that "athletic venues" was the most appropriate term to use, and it would fit into all of the scenarios that we could imagine where advertising would, this request would come in for the sports teams.
How long is the list of words to describe athletic venues? Is it really a long list that we couldn't just be more specific?
You know, I think that when we were discussing options, say, like a site where a track and field meet would, or a cross-country, actually, the cross-country, as far as like how you would describe that.
Is that not a field?
Actually, a lot of times they occur like on, like golf courses or in more, like, yeah, natural. So in thinking about all the options that would accurately describe where all of our sports teams would compete, athletic venues seem to be the most encompassing and appropriate considering all the options.
And is this concerning permanent placement of advertising or temporary placement during an event?
Be temporary, like in a situation of a cross-country, obviously a temporary. With, you know, a basketball, again, it would be temporary because at the, at the time of, we would need to make sure that, a situation like a basketball gym, it's also used for classes and things like that. It's only athletic venue during the time that the game is taking place, that would be a temporary.
Oh, so you're saying that you couldn't put up some kind of advertisement at a basketball court because it could be used for a classroom as well, so you would not be putting advertising?
It would be temporary.
Temporary, okay.
Yeah, so in situations where it's a multi-use space, it would be temporary.
Is that stated here in the bar, in the language of the policy?
I think that we may want to add a little bit more clarity to the...
That's what I'm thinking, temporary, multi-use, those seem like pretty key words in all this. My concern about the term "athletic venues" is it's wide open to interpretation. So does that mean we're going to have advertising on a sidewalk where kids are doing skateboarding or advertising? I mean, I'm just, it just seems like it could be really open, and what this does is open the door to us allowing advertising pretty much anywhere where anything kind of athletic is going on. And is that what we want? Do we just want to have more of that and just not have any restrictions? Or, I'm just wondering if by being too broad, we're being vague to the point where we're unleashing something we might not have intended.
I think that's a valid comment. I think that, as we discuss, as I would say, that we could consider adding an additional language as far as athletic venues where interscholastic competitions occur, athletic competitions occur, something of that nature. So like, to your point, where athletic things in general take place, wouldn't be included in that. We could also work on a specific, just a definition to add to the policy, which would also be an option as well.
I would be interested in having more language like that added.
Yeah, I'd be happy to work on that.
Director Burke? And then Director Patu?
I appreciate President Peter's comments about the distinction between, you know, an athletic venue and something that is an academic space. And so providing clarity around that, that academic venues that are co-located with athletic space, that any advertisements shall be removed prior to the space being returned to its, you know, educational purpose. And I have a question, has there been a superintendent procedure developed that accompanies this?
Yes, there is a superintendent procedure, also 4237 SP.
Okay, I think that would be helpful if it could be attached as part of this, or maybe I just didn't get there.
Yes, and I think that as I, as I work on the communication from tonight, I think that we may find that some of the information may be more appropriate for that procedure, but we may decide it's appropriate in the policy, so we may definitely want to put both on the consideration.
Right, I guess where I was going with that is that the, there's a list of prohibited activities, there's the definition of athletic venues, and there's something in here about the, wherever possible, the superintendent designated is encouraged to support local ventures. So in, it implies that there's potentially some sort of selection process for advertisers, and whether that's an individual or a committee, and basically what the responsibility is for that, who holds the authority. I just want to make sure that that's captured somewhere in our, in our, our policy document or the procedure, so that buildings have that guidance and that people don't overextend their authority.
Director Blanford? And actually, in leading to that notion, that we make sure that it's, you know, that we're actually not getting carried away in terms of our advertisement, I had a conversation with athletic team in terms of looking at advertisement, mainly for the time that they were actually playing their games, and, and looking at being self-sufficient in terms of budget-wise. Because we have a budget deficit, I feel that that's a department where we don't really put a lot of money into, and having those advertisements to use, to actually, to make them a little bit more self-sufficient in terms of bringing budget in for that particular department, I think that's a good way to go, but we also want to make sure that it's limited, it's not to where everything, you know, is advertisement on a regular basis. So I support the fact that we need to word it in a way that it's not all the time, you know, you're not having their advertisement 24 hours a day, but actually doing events, because I support the fact that they do need to have funds in order for them to be able to support that particular program.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
Are there any comments or questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the next item, number three, sorry, it's number four, approval of 2016-17 International Union of Operating Engineers, IUEO, Local 609 Nutrition Services salary schedules, 1 for 9, 1 2016 through 12, 31 2016, and 1 effective 1, 1 2017. This came to Executive Committee. Betty, do you remember anything specific about that, other than the date?
There, nothing has actually come forward with this particular item. They were actually supposed to discuss it and bring it back to us, but we haven't heard anything at this point from 609. Leslie?
That wasn't my recollection. I believe that we had moved this forward for approval.
For approval, that's right, yeah.
And we thanked...
Yeah, we did.
The Director of Labor Management, and I'm not sure of your exact title, and my apologies in advance.
I struggle with that myself.
That we were most appreciative of these issues that had been dialed up previously by HR, and that we weren't attempting to balance the budget on the backs of the least paid of our district.
Right.
If I may.
Sure.
We're seeking approval of these schedules which were negotiated with Local 609, covering nutrition services employees, and to this point, approximately 37% of the employees are in the situation where they're below the $15 minimum wage. As another piece of background, the collective bargaining agreement that we're currently under called for a wage survey to be conducted essentially last summer prior to the beginning of the school year, and a survey was conducted, but when we met with the union, it became apparent that the bigger issue was compliance with the Seattle minimum wage, which calls for a $15 per hour minimum wage for those who are not receiving health insurance contributions from the employer. The negotiations involved a careful look at the salary schedule that we began the year with at September 1, which included the 1.8% that had previously been enacted. And we recognized that the salary schedules had structures or steps for moving employees from one level of responsibility to another. There were incentives built into the system to promote that kind of development on the part of staff. The resulting negotiations preserved the notion of that hierarchical progression, but altered it essentially because of cost considerations and the significant pressure that was resulting from the $15 minimum wage. There are 225 workers covered by this schedule. The additional cost for this fiscal year over the rates previously approved September 1 is $186,000. The annualized cost, since what I just referenced as a partial year cost, is $279,000. I would also like to note that if this, this is currently scheduled for final action on January 4, so I wanted to disclose that it's recommended to be effective January 1, so there is a short piece of retroactivity, even though the actual payment of funds would not occur until February 1. But that, that should have, we wanted to disclose that. The other point I would make is that this category of employees is 90% female and 55% persons of color. And finally, that the financial impact is consistent with discussion we had with the Board in closed session. I'm prepared for any questions. Well, I think I am, I may not be.
Are there any questions or comments?
Did he say 75 female? 90%? 20%? And 55%? 55%? 55%? 55%? 55%? 55%? 55%?
Well, I don't see any questions or comments, so, you know, I personally am support, you know, doing what we're doing here in terms of raising the wage and paying them fairly, so this is necessary work we need to do, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is also a wage-related one. This is approval of minimum wage adjustments, and this, is that the same? This one came to the Executive Committee same day, and that also got advanced for approval.
Yes, thank you. It's a related issue. We have a significant number of non-represented employees that are on an hourly rate, hourly wage schedule, and a significant number of them were subject to that minimum wage $15 issue as well. So, long story short, we again have the relationship among the different positions, and we are recommending an adjustment to the pay schedule to bring up the bottom to $15. The relationship was somewhat adjusted due to considerations of cost, but the relationships were preserved in the sense of the relative rankings. Again, these are positions that are 61% female, 40% persons of color. The current fiscal year cost is $450,000 to $550,000, depending on whether you include the cost of related benefits. The annualized cost is in the range of $695,000 to $850,000. And again, there's the retroactivity issue, since final action is proposed for January 4 with payment occurring in February.
Director Blanford?
I'm vaguely remembering part of the conversation that we had in the Operations Committee on this item, and when you, when you made the comment about we've preserved the ranking but not necessarily the spread, I interpreted that to be that, that there's some compression as a result of...
Correct.
...this, but there's not one job function jumping ahead of a different job function, so maintaining this...
That's correct. We, yes, we maintained the relative relationships, but not necessarily the size of the relationship.
Right, the percentage difference between one and the other.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Director Harris?
We just love your tie.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next item is item number six, approval of a contract to AudioEye Incorporated for web and technology accessibility. This came to Ops.
Which heard this item on November 17th and moved forward for approval.
Good evening, I'm Michael Miller, I'm the Accessibility Coordinator for the district. The action before you would approve a contract with AudioEye in the amount of $287,000, $298. This would be a new contract with a two-year initial term and an option for a third year. A third year would only be needed if there's major changes in the district's website or if regulations that govern accessibility change dramatically. Excuse me. AudioEye would be engaged to assume the tasks of maintaining the website as required by applicable guidelines, specifically for... applicable guidelines, specifically for proof. AudioEye would assess the site, make all corrections to the site, and then they would then certify the site as being accessible. They, it'll, this contract will reduce the burden on current SPS resources. It'll provide the certification and verification of our website being fully compliant. And AudioEye will indemnify the district if any of the work that they do on our website causes us to be out of compliance and there are judgment being made against the district for monetary reasons. This will take us a huge step into complying with the major component of the consent decree that was signed in 2015. If you have any, answer any questions you may have.
Director Blanford?
Not, not a question, but a comment. I remember very well the precipitating event that, that caused us to get to this point. And it was one that, as a school board director, I was a little bit ashamed that we were in a position where we were denying unintentionally, but denying access to critical information that a parent needed to, in order to support their kid, their student. And so I'm very pleased that we've gotten to this point, and we've identified a vendor that's willing to take on some of the risk and assure a high level of compliance with federal law. And so I'm pleased to support this motion when it comes up for a vote.
Thank you.
Thanks for the introduction, and I would like to, I guess, have, I have a couple of clarifying questions. First, I just want to understand, there's, this is a double-function thing. One of them is that they, you know, AudioEye is helping us do the right thing, and the other is they're indemnifying us if something turns out to not be the right thing.
They're, they are indemnifying us to the extent that the work that they do on the platform would bring us out of
So that, that drills into my second question. The work that they do or the conditions of our website?
The work that they do on the website. The district would still be responsible for the actual content, the words on the page. They'd be responsible for the background of the platform.
Okay, so they're, they're more the, the delivery system, the backend, or the content management system, making sure that that is compliant. But if we put up content that is not compatible or compliant,
That's
That's our risk. If they create a system that perpetuates it or that can't support it, that's on them.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. And then, just to clarify for myself as well, the, the two-year term at about $222,000 versus the third year at 65, is that actually a reduced service in the third year, or is that more of a, kind of a long-term discount if we stay with them?
It's actually looking at the amount of work that needs to be done, and the majority of that work will be done probably in the first year, some of it going on into the second year. That third year, again, would be more maintenance, or if there were any major changes in the regulations.
And, and if for some reason that work, you know, had some scope creep or were to shift, is this a fixed-price thing with a fixed scope?
We would have, right, we would have to, you know, do an amendment to the contract and come back to you for approval. It's penalties.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is item number seven, approval of the annual SAP Software Maintenance and Licensing Agreement. This also went to Ops.
Yep, which heard it at the same time on the 17th and moved it forward for approval.
Okay, Mr. Crowe, would you like to tell us a little bit about this item?
Yes, this is a one-year renewal of our SAP platform, which is used for finance, budget, HR. It's used for processes as simple as payroll, but very important. This is for maintenance and licensing for one year. It's a continuation of software that we've been using since 2000. And it's, it's needed, the support and maintenance is needed to just make sure that we've got the company's support for any issues that might come up during, during the year with the software. If there's any updates, we'll get those automatically.
Any questions or comments? Director Burke?
Sorry, I don't want to keep everybody here all night, but I'm, I'm trying to go into memory, and so this will be before your time, but perhaps somebody could refresh my memory. Is the, is the SAP license what we reviewed as a board a while ago, looking at different levels of license, different levels of support? And we looked at a, a more advanced support that would allow us to do an upgrade, or was that Power School? Or something else?
I think you're thinking of Power School, because we recently did that, I believe, in, in June.
Okay. So, back up from that question. I hear, like, any enterprise-level software has its pros and cons. And so I'm curious if, from your point of view, if this is something that the board should be looking at as a risk, or if this is something that you see as a, you know, ongoing part of, of what we're doing here. I just, the, the concerns around the efficacy of this tool for the long, or this, this system for the long term in Seattle, not that we want to invest in another one, I want to be very clear about that, but just understanding, every time it comes up for a renewal is a chance for us to ask, how are we doing on it? So I wanted to just ask, how are we doing on it?
Yeah, that, that's a good point. So, one thing we're doing is we're doing the renewals on a year-by-year basis to, to keep our options open. One thing we're also doing is we're, we're looking at tool, for tools that augment SAP. SAP's been a good foundation for us, and it's one of, one or two of the main enterprise-level software for, for finance used, you know, across industries. It is very well-known. That being said, sometimes there's, there's parts that we want to plug something in differently. So again, something that happened a little bit ago before my time is for our substitute management system. You know, SAP's not, that's very narrow and very K-12 oriented, and although they could handle it, it was better to go with a state-of-the-art, number one in substitute management. And that plugs in nicely because SAP has all the hooks for hooking in other systems. So we were able to get a really good system that's improving our management of substitutes, but while still keeping the SAP as our core system. Another example that we'll be coming to the board with is we're looking at a budget development tool. Now SAP might be the best solution for that, but we're also looking at other modules that plug into SAP.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have made our way to one of the highlights of the evening. The approval of the Student Assignment Plan for 2017-18. That also went to the Operations Committee.
Which also heard it on the 17th of November and moved it forward for consideration.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. I guess good evening at this point. I do, my name is Ashley Davies. I'm the Director of Enrollment Planning here at Seattle Public Schools. I know it's late in the evening, but I do have a PowerPoint that I wanted to run through quickly to highlight the changes, and also for us to have on record to talk about the student assignment plan changes I'll be discussing. So, this PowerPoint basically captures the information that we were sharing at our community meetings across the city that we've had. We've had five of them at this point. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the changes, a little bit about the feedback, and then I know there's some, are some amendments that I'm sure that you all want to discuss with us. Okay, great. So I first want to start by mentioning that all the, all the information that I'm sharing today are recommendations for changes to our student assignment plan, which is different from our procedures. So the student assignment plan for the 17-18 school year. So nothing would be implemented this school year. Everything is for changes for the coming school year. And these changes, many of them also incorporate some information and decisions based upon the growth boundaries decisions from the 16th. And so I'll talk about those and the relation of some of them. So the first of which is the addition of three new schools. Cedar Park Elementary, which will be listed as an option school in our student assignment plan, Meany Middle and Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. So these are three new schools that'll be added into the student assignment plan. And then for the attendance area middles, it'll also have the reference to the elementary schools that feed into them within the plan. The next is the, the truncation or the transition of Madrona from a K-8 to a K-5. Again, this means that Madrona, which is currently one of our three attendance area K-8 schools, meaning that families have essentially two guaranteed options for the middle school grades. That's the 6-8 portion of the K-8 if they live within that attendance area, or the attendance area middle school for which they live in that area. So even with transitioning Madrona to a K-5, all those families would still have access and a guaranteed seat at Meany Middle School, which is opening in 17-18. So this is a result, again, of Meany opening as well as the low enrollment at Madrona. Across their sixth grade, they have about 15 students currently, and roughly 60 students across all of their middle school grades. We've had several community meetings specific to just that community. I will also be having another meeting tomorrow night to speak with just the middle school families. We've had the planning principal at Meany Middle School, also a part of all those conversations, so that families understand the option for them that will be available if Madrona does transition to a K-5. Establishing a gezone for Lipton Springs. So currently, Lipton Springs is in the Lincoln Building, does not have a gezone, and now that it's moving to a, a permanent location, we need to establish a gezone for Lipton Springs, since all of our option schools do have a gezone surrounding them. So this gezone would be drawn within Daniel Bagley. It is also included within the service area for Lipton Springs, so it would align with the transportation access that families could have if they live with, outside the walk zone to Lipton Springs. And again, it would also help relieve capacity at Daniel Bagley. So, the gezone doesn't give someone a guaranteed assignment, but it gives them a level of priority if they do want to apply. Updates to the highly capable cohort pathways at the elementary level. So Cascadia will also be moving into its new building in 17-18. And the current size of that cohort is about 750, which cannot be fully accommodated in the new building, which is planned for 660 students. So the recommendation is to geo-split that cohort, meaning that we would utilize the Cascadia building, as well as the Decatur building, which is on the Thornton Creek campus. And students would be assigned to one of those sites as a pathway site based on their home address. So families that live essentially within the Eckstein service area would be assigned to Decatur, and then families in all the other service areas in the north end would be assigned to Cascadia. So the one piece to that that did have to be updated based on the approved boundary plan from the 16th is that the Eckstein service area itself is actually too large for all the students within that service area to be accommodated just at Decatur. So it would be all of the attendance areas in Eckstein minus Wedgewood would likely be the recommendation. And that would right-size the Decatur building, as well as the Cascadia, and leave a little bit of room for growth between both buildings. And then no other, there are no other recommendations for changes for any of the other elementary pathways. I also want to mention, this was recommended as well via the feedback that we got from families through school surveys. So the district provided surveys to families outlining several options, including this one. And then the Cascadia community also created their own survey, talking about the potential different options for accommodating all the students in the cohort. With this as well, we would have many families who would be able to walk to school now that they're at Decatur rather than having to travel to Cascadia, and it would maximize walkability. At the middle school level, we have two changes, the first of which would be establishing Eaglestaff as a pathway at the middle school level. So as I mentioned, Eaglestaff is opening up as a new attendance area middle school. And currently, all the eligible and enrolled students in the cohort within the Whitman, the McClure, and the Hamilton service area all attend Hamilton. And so with the opening of Eaglestaff, families that live within the Whitman attendance area, as well as the, the new Eaglestaff attendance area, would be assigned to Eaglestaff. And then families who lived within the McClure attendance area, as well as the Hamilton attendance area, would continue to be assigned to Hamilton for HCC. Other addition is establishing Madison Middle School as a default pathway for HCC at the middle school level. So currently, Madison is an option site. The default pathway for West Seattle is Washington Middle School. And this year, actually the last two years, we've had families opting in to Madison who live in West Seattle. And with this change, we would be making that the default pathway. Families would still have access to Washington through the school choice process if they did not want Madison and lived in West Seattle, but it would no longer be a guaranteed pathway assignment. And then all the other pathways at the middle school level would remain the same. This chart just describes some of the changes, as well as some of the other pathways that are staying the same. So, the next change is establishing a dual-language immersion pathway for families who are currently at Mercer in eighth grade. So Mercer Middle School offers the dual-language immersion pathway, and those students have articulated up to eighth grade and now need a continuation. And so there's actually a task force that has been meeting for several months to talk about many different aspects of successful programs, budgeting, as well as assignments and pathways for our international schools, and looking specifically, thinking about the options for families in the southeast. And so that group did do some specific surveys for all the current eighth graders at Mercer, as well as talk with the principals in that area about establishing a pathway in the southeast. And at this time, there's currently not a high school that has the capacity or ability to offer a successful program. So the recommendation is to name Chief South, which is already a pathway for the Southwest Seattle, as the pathway for those at Mercer who want to continue. So, of the outreach that was done to families who are at Mercer in that pathway, the majority of them actually wanted to stay at their attendance area high school, which would be Franklin. And they have a diverse And they have diverse language offerings there. So many would stay there, but if they wanted to continue formally within the pathway, that would be Chief South for seventeen eighteen. The next is in regard to our K eights and the middle school portion of our K eights. So as I mentioned when I spoke about Madrona, families who live within the attendance area of a K eight have essentially two guaranteed assignments at the middle school level. The six eight portion of their K eight or the middle school attendance area. And for some of our K eights in particular, Catherine Blaine comes to mind. As they experience challenges at the middle school level with capacity, it is difficult to continue to accept new students in those middle school grades despite the fact that they're guaranteed a seat. So we are recommending to add a clause to that piece of the student assignment plan that says that new students who reside within the attendance area of a K eight would be granted a seat in that six eight portion pending space availability as to prevent any type of overload for schools that don't have any more capacity. So it wouldn't change any of those continuations for students who are currently there in fifth grade who want to articulate up to six. It would just be for new students who are coming into the area. There's no seats available. They would just have the option of their attendance area middle school. The next is moving the waitlist dissolution date to August thirty first from August fifteenth. So as many of you may know, we made a change to the dissolution date of the waitlist this year to August fifteenth as a way to provide schools some more stability and predictability for their classrooms, for their planning configurations, and such that there wasn't that movement into the school year as we had previously, as well as add some finality for families in understanding what their assignment was going to be for the coming year. So we did surveys to our school leaders asking for feedback around some of the changes to the student assignment plan, in particular, some of the dates. And we got feedback that generally that date was preferable to move it ahead of the start of school, but school leaders wanted a little bit more time to allow registrars to come back, do some more cleanup. So we are recommending to move that to August thirty first. The next is piloting Nova as a service school from an option school. So currently Nova is an option school. And as an option school, they're bound to the open enrollment timelines, the school choice timelines. And that limits access for families for some of our non-traditional types of schools. And so we had gotten specific feedback from school leadership at Nova around wanting to increase enrollment, wanting to allow continued access. And so piloting Nova as a service school will allow us to do that. The next is two, actually three small alignments based off of the, some of the misalignments after the growth boundaries plan was approved on the sixteenth. So as a result of the, some of the elementary changes not being implemented, we did end up with six elementary schools that don't feed into just one middle school. Three of the areas are fairly large. They cut between, they have significant portions that cut between two middle schools. And then we have three other areas that are small. Across those three other areas, there are only fifteen students who would be currently impacted. And with this cleanup of the Eaglestaff and Eckstein boundaries that would allow all of those students within View Ridge to remain together and Wedgewood to remain together and go to Eckstein rather than just have a handful of students who would have to be separated from the rest of their cohort into Jane Adams. And the same goes for Broadview Thompson with Eaglestaff. So this just shows, again, some of those numbers. Before I talk about the five community meetings that we've had, I did want to mention three other updates that we did want to make based on some recent conversations in our two-by-twos with the board. And so didn't have a chance to update them, but these are mostly around kind of language that we'd like to update. And I just wanted to state that for the record. So the first of which was moving the updated plan just as student assignment plan. So we talked about potentially changing that back to student assignment transition plan. The next of which was adding a little bit of information in the preface that talked about that two thousand and nine document and the connection between this student assignment plan version for seventeen eighteen and that two thousand and nine document. There's been conversation about us getting to a place where we can merge them. We're not there yet. We want to be really thoughtful about that plan and give ourselves some time to do some really thoughtful engagement and make sure that nothing is left out and everything is transparent. But do you want to recognize that that document contains information and references that may still be important for families? And then the last of which was adding a separate section and designation for our alternative learning experience schools and taking those four schools that are now listed under service schools and listing them as ALEs rather than that. So those were three changes that came from some of our conversations that staff felt we could also co-sign on and that wouldn't be controversial. So we've had five community meetings across the city, one in every region to talk about these changes. And also have explained to families during that time some of the key enrollment dates, given the relevance and the tie-in with this information. That's all I have. No questions, no time for questions. So I will let, I will let you take the floor then.
All right, I'm just going to simply ask if there are any questions or comments about.
And then I would love to touch on the amendments too at whatever point feels best for you all.
Director Blattford.
I have two questions. The first, what time is the meeting scheduled for Madrona? That's Madrona Parents tomorrow?
The Madrona meeting is at six P M. I hear there will be pizza. It is in the library. And yeah.
Okay. And my second question is, I had very brief conversation with Mark Perry, who's the principal at Nova.
Yes.
Yesterday, and it, it did not appear that he was comfortable with the idea. I'm writing him an email right now. I'm not going to send it until we close this meeting. But it didn't appear that he supported the idea of going to a service school.
So we had, I'll explain a little bit about that conversation and how we came to that collective decision about doing the pilot for a service school. I think that's the important part, about the fact that it's specific to call the fact that it's a pilot for just one year. So a lot of the feedback that Principal Perry had about his school was he wanted to accept students into the school year with a cutoff date of September thirtieth. And as an option school, we still align all of our open enrollment and school choice dates with all the other schools. So the only way to have a little bit more flexibility would be to have Nova as a service school. So I think in the ideal world, he would probably love to maybe stay in option school, but just have a different waitlist cutoff date. But just out of consistency for all of our schools, we had talked about just trying out one year as a service school without having the rigidity of those timelines and then doing a reassessment of that, so.
My understanding, based on being his school board director for three years now and every year consistently hearing his challenge with the fact that his enrollment comes in frequently after our count dates. And so he has then penalized. But he consistently shows that over the course of the year, he has enrollment that justifies the budget that he receives. And so it's, to my understanding, it's not a matter of preference. It's a matter of, there's a historical background that requires that he, serving a very needy population, he was sharing with the other principals at the principals' meeting yesterday, how vulnerable his population is of students and requiring a little bit of discretion in order to be able to manage the complexity of the student population that he's dealing with. And so I haven't had that conversation with him yet, but it's something that I, I want to know more about where his concerns are. And hopefully we'll be able to dialogue and, if possible, find some solution that is mutually agreeable to all parties.
Yeah, yeah. And so I actually went and visited last week after, just to have a follow-up on the conversation that we had had as a group. And do recognize that his concerns really stem from just wanting to, wanting us to think about his school and the uniqueness of it. And it is challenging as a system for us to think about timelines and to think about processes and for principals to have really valid arguments around the fact that, oh, I understand the timelines and those processes, but my school and my students need something different. And so our conversation and the idea of the pilot was around, well, let's at least just try this. Let's see if we can work within our guidelines and policies. And then if that doesn't work, figure out what we can kind of do next after that. But at least give it a try before we create something outside of our typical policies and procedures.
Director Petu.
Can you give me a definition for, for service school?
Yeah, so the definition for a service school is actually pretty broad. For the most part, it is, it offers services and programs that are not traditionally offered at some of our more comprehensive schools. And again, with those in particular, they're not bound to the open enrollment, school choice timelines like the rest of our either attendance area schools or even option schools.
Thank you. I think I saw Director Harris and then Director Burke.
If you could respond to the board offline, I'm going to put three questions out there, if I might. I thought that we had come to consensus about ALE schools and not calling them service schools because of the pejorative nature of that title and to call them ALE slash option schools, which gives them the rolling enrollment flexibility. I thought that we had some significant buy-in on that, so I'm confused. If I missed the memo, I'll own it. I've had some pretty rich discussions about, for instance, how middle, college, high school was changed back in the day under footnote number four, from an option school to a service school. And, and it had some pretty horrific consequences. And, and I want to remind my fellow colleagues that middle school, high school in two thousand and nine had five hundred students. And we're lucky if we break a hundred and fifty now. And again, since we are talking about closing the opportunity gap, I would like special consideration for these unique populations. Interagency, Nova, middle college, high school. Second question, and again, happy to take the feedback offline as long as it's copied to the entirety of the board so that we're on literally the same page. When did the Madison Advanced Learning change get daylighted? And was there any community engagement on that fact? And if so, the details of the community engagement? Third, I maintain my offer to ride the buses from southeast Seattle, international school areas, Beacon Hill, Dearborn Park, Asa Mercer, to get to Chief South International High School. The east-west bus connections are absurd. And the pragmatic result of that, I think, needs to be taken into account. Thank you very much for your hard work, and I still remain in awe of you.
Director Burke.
Leslie's closure is my opening. I want to start by thanking you for being amazing. The, you know, the data analysis, the communication, the outreach to schools. The, oh yeah, I'm going out to meet with that school tomorrow is refreshing and invigorating. So thank you for that. I wanted to just confirm a couple of things quickly. Make sure that I'm understanding what was in the presentation. The, in the slides, there's a, the HCC transition, the idea is that all Eckstein students would move to Decatur except for Wedgewood. Is, did I understand that properly? And that's something that would be in future language? It's not in the current one, or is that in the current language?
So it's not spelled out in the current language?
Okay, so that, that's in the, in the anticipated coming soon list?
Yes.
And then there were two sort of pathways for dual-language immersion students at Mercer and at the K eight programs where there's two different options where they could go. Either their neighborhood schools or the Chief South or the K eights respectively. Are both of those guaranteed assignments? An international student could go to either their attendance area or Chief South, both guaranteed?
Yeah, so a family always has a guarantee at their attendance area.
Okay.
School, and then if they're in the, if they're in the pathway at Mercer, they would get that guarantee to South.
Perfect, okay, that's what I thought, I understood. And then the, the, one of the changes in this plan, the misalignment corrections to better adjust the pathways for Wedgewood, View Ridge, and Vuelens, I guess. Small number of students impacted, are those students that would be, would be actually moved? Or are those students that would be, would it be a roll-up or is it a grandfathered situation?
The recommendation for these areas would be to grandfather just because it is a cleanup after the fact. We did have the boundary vote already, and so we wouldn't want to make this change and then have to tell these families that they would have to move. So all the families in these areas would get, would stay, have the ability to be grandfathered.
And just to, that's grandfathering with transportation if we're needed or not, or is...
So that would, that would technically be a board determination, but given the small number, we would say, and given the previous approval of those other areas with the transportation, we would say grandfathering with transportation.
I guess as part of Director Harris's questions, if you could provide a recommendation to the board for, if there's an amendment needed or if that's something that, that there's consensus on amongst staff for how to, how to carry out that cleanup process with minimum impact on, on families?
Peggy McAvoy, Assistant Superintendent Operations. I know that when the board asks for that type of cleanup, you also are wanting to make sure that, what the costs are for that. So we'll go ahead and do that analysis. And as we move the transportation service standards forward, we will make sure that we pay particular attention to that. attention to that and make sure that we're giving you that information, then also before you also do the updated student assignment plan.
Director Pinkham and then Director Bradford?
And I'd hopefully like to get some more information or some numbers on the impact that, what would happen if Lipton Springs was given, you know, the 14 rooms. I recall like when we're working with actually Loyalt Heights, there was some issue as far as the, the number of floors, and there's certain grades that can go on the top floors. So I'm not sure if, again, that would impact trying to accommodate Lipton Springs' ask that, again, we can't have certain grade levels on the upper floors. So right now, I'd be thinking, just kind of visualizing, what would be the impact if Lipton Springs was given all three floors in the, that southwest wing or whatever that they're in right now, and how that may impact other assignment plans, or even, you know, Robert Eaglestaff, you know, how much does that take away from them? I think there's five floors on that third floor, I believe, for the classrooms. Just, so, so you can start seeing what kind of things we can work with there, if, if that's feasible, if it's possible, given, again, it's a K through eight, we're trying to see, but, oh, no, we can't have third graders on this floor. That, those are kind of questions I want to get hopefully clarified, to see what kind of steps we can do to move forward, to see if that's definitely feasible there.
So just to clarify your question, you want to see the impact of if we allocated 14 rather than seven rooms to Lipton Springs, that impact that it would have on Eaglestaff?
Yes, and then possibly other, you know, I guess that's the main, just that, I'll just ask for that right now, to see what that impact would be. And I guess right now, just looking at, if I, what's the third floors, that'd be 12 classrooms, because the fifth, the third floor did have five classrooms.
Director Bradford and then Director Burke?
I feel like I'm about to ask you a, a fairly dangerous question, and so I'll apologize in advance. And I'm hesitant to ask the question partially because I stand personally to benefit from it, but going to the conversation about the immersion program and, and Chief South, do we have any policy, or have you received any guidance about what is done when, before your time, promises are made, promises or plans are made with regard to what we're going to do at some point in the future, and then what happens when we don't follow through on those plans? And the reason I ask that question is because I was a parent when we were choosing to enroll our daughter in, at, at Beacon Hill International School, and being very excited about the immersion program. I was in a room with lots of other parents who remind me frequently of this promise that, that what was promised was that as our, as our children moved through elementary school into middle school into high school, there would be a school designated for their, so that they could stay in an immersion program, with the idea that we were making a commitment to stay involved in, and help them through the immersion and the growth of that, and the district was making some sort of a promise that there would be a program that wasn't so far away that it was unworkable for most families. So that didn't happen, and we received some feedback or testimony earlier today that other promises have been made, and then, then parents are wondering, what happened? Is this a shell game? And I know their best intentions, and we're dealing with radically different conditions that are in place now than they were, you know, in 2009 when, when my daughter started school. But what is our obligation to stay true to the promises or the plans that we have actually put out there? Because I believe in, I believe that there is some measure of goodwill that we expect from our communities, and when we erode that trust by putting something out there and then having to withdraw it, that doesn't work. I can tell you that there are a huge number of parents that are very dissatisfied with the idea that they would ship their kids from somewhere in southeast where they live to Chief's, Chief's South in order to continue the Mandarin immersion program or some immersion program. And it's hard for me to go into their living rooms, because many of them are personal friends, and try to explain to them why this is the case. And so I'm wondering, and maybe this isn't a conversation that we can have right now, but I would like to know at some point, or maybe provide some advice as to what obligations we have when we have planned and announced to our communities things that we intend to do and then are not able to follow through on. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. I know I was rambling on for a while, but I also know that there are a huge number of families that understand the complexity of this, but also have a sense of disappointment.
Director Nyland?
Might be more than what Ashley is up for, although she's a fast learner and been doing good work for us. The dual-language task force completed a report that I think we sent to you, but we'll send it to you again. It was very enlightening to me, so after being here two years, it was kind of like, oh, is that what we promised, intended, hoped for, whatever? And the really short version is that the hoped-for was 20 pathways, and the reality is more like 10 pathways that, as you note, aren't complete. And then Jolynn's budget work is showing us how much it costs us to try to stand up those programs, and it does have a cost. So we're, yeah, we're not fulfilling our promises, so, and that's not, and that's true not only for that program, but many other programs, and now with the budget crisis, we face the difficulty of can we even do, continue to do what we currently are doing, let alone what we said at one point in time that we were doing.
Director Burke?
I, I wanted to follow up some of Scott's line of questioning around Lipton Springs, and I had emailed some questions previously, I'm not sure if folks had a chance to, to give it some thought. I'm curious, with the, the building in the current state of construction or, or work that it's in, is it viable to add movable partitions that would allow additional class spaces? Does that provide sufficient educational space? Does it meet legal requirements? Would that be a possible bridge solution to help Lipton Springs get from where they are now to a growth target?
So Richard Bass, Director, Capital Projects and Planning for Seattle Public Schools, Director Burke. Lipton Springs now, the southwest wing is nearing completion. We have got gypsum wallboard on the walls, gypsum wallboards being painted at this moment in time, so revising to create operable walls, I would say that, you know, ship has sailed. Doesn't mean that there's not exploration going on, we're looking at some alternatives, exploring, you know, how to provide additional classrooms there. I know conversations are occurring with building principals, Sherry Cox, myself, so we are aware of your email. I didn't respond yet because I'm trying to collect some additional information, but we are engaged in those conversations at this moment in time.
Thanks. I just, I really want to appreciate that and, and highlight that even if, as you indicated, the, the ship has sailed at some point, there is the, you know, the incremental capital cost, but then there's also putting a small number of students in a full classroom that has a, you know, sort of an ongoing operating capacity that, in some cases, maybe that would be a better investment as a change order to provide that capacity. So I, I know that's on your mind.
And one of the things I will say that we talked about on the Capital Project side today is to try to get the folks at Lipton Springs, the building administrator and some of the staff there to come into our Robert Eaglestaff Middle School. Their reference point right now is Lincoln High School, and previously it was the old Pinehurst Building. We are talking a totally different teaching environment than those reference points. And so having them see the classrooms and the sizes of the classrooms that we're talking about may also be, you know, an educational process, which is the mission of our institution,
Michael Tully, Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. I wanted to respond a little bit to that email that you sent regarding the use of the facilities at Eaglestaff. I did call together a meeting with Marty Campbell and Roy Merka to discuss the, the flexibility of space usage regarding this. Particularly, we have a unique situation with a K-8 school in the same building as a middle school, and what is the opportunities available to maximize our services to students in that setting, particularly for the sixth through eighth grade level? And both principals indicated that they, of course, would work very closely together to do two things, one, serve our students with the way they need to be served, as well as maintain the integrity of both programs. But because there is a middle school, full comprehensive middle school on that site that gives you opportunities, for example, if you have a small number of middle school age students wanting to take Algebra I within Lipton Spring, well, that, it would make sense that they might attend classes with the Eaglestaff Middle School. And, and the opposite could also be true. If you have a, a social studies program, say with, that has the social justice focus being taught within the Lipton Spring program, there may be middle schoolers within Eaglestaff that might want to take advantage of that as well. So that's a partnership that could be established and maintained within that one building.
While you're up at the DAAS, this is maybe for you, maybe for Ashley, is it, is it appropriate, or is it something that the board can request to not have a cap of 150 on the program? To either raise the cap or something so that there's not the, the perception that growth is, is limited on that program? Is it something that we can put a little bit bigger box around to allow it to grow?
So based on, based on enrollment historically for Lipton Springs, it's, it's not had a cap, and it's, it hasn't been above, it's been between 120 and 150 over the past few years. And it wasn't until, you know, this year where we had a waitlist, and that was just because we were trying to ensure that when the school does move into Eaglestaff, that it would be able to fit. But even typically without a cap, it didn't even have a waitlist. So, you know, we'd have to ensure that the, the students and the enrollment would fit with the classroom spaces they have. So that is likely going to be around 150. So I, I would be hesitant to commit to something above 200 unless we were talking about physically having additional space to ensure that if enrollment did go above 150, we had the space to accommodate.
Thank you. Director Pinkham?
I think we, something also you have to be aware of with Lipton Springs, it has been an intemperory site for these past few years, that once, I think, families will see, hey, here's the permanent location, you're going to see enrollment or demand increase. So I think limited right now to say just 150 isn't wise, so I, I think, you know, if we're saying, if we're going above 150, we need more space, then I think that's something we definitely need to look at, more space for Lipton Springs at Eaglestaff.
I will mention that at the same, I mean, we go through our process of open enrollment and school choice with all of our schools on the same timeline, so at the same time we're seeing enrollment at Eaglestaff, we'll also be able to see demand for Lipton Springs. So, you know, this conversation can, we can continue to monitor those things at that time and see if, kind of, the amount of students who do apply and where we are with that.
Director Giri?
Hello, thank you for your work, of course. I was glad to hear, in terms of the updates that you're thinking about, is reinserting transition, I think as long as this plan is in flux, that putting people on notice of that and then including a preface referencing the 2009 plan is also a good idea. It occurs to me that also referencing the fact that we have something like Lincoln coming online within the foreseeable future and therefore is going to cause further adjustments to the assignment plan, maybe something that we need to think about putting on people, people on notice now, and that sort of creating more a culture of putting people on notice of upcoming changes so that we're not having to address, address them when they say a promise has been broken. We put them on notice as they're going through the enrollment process, that we know these changes are coming, they need to know these changes are coming too, so that they have an opportunity to, to think it through, prepare themselves however they need to. So that said, so there's a lot in my notes. The, the creation of the school at Decatur as an assignment seems to me, that was an area with one school, it was Decatur and then I think AE2 and then Thornton Creek, and now Thornton Creek is in an entirely different building, and we have an empty building called Decatur. And it makes me think we are creating a self-contained school that we're disguising as an assignment plan, and it, once that is created, there will, it will be very difficult to roll it back again because the promise of the space with this name becomes very fixed, and I'm concerned about that. And I know there's an amendment, and I just want to daylight my concerns about just how we're going about rolling students into a building that appears to me we're creating a whole new school, self-contained school for highly capable students.
Can I, can I just make a comment to that?
Sure.
So essentially, that is what would be happening.
And it just seems to do this in the context of an assignment plan, I don't know, it doesn't, it doesn't feel right to me. It doesn't feel as thoughtful as I think the creation of a new school within our school district should be. I have made it pretty clear, I'm not really in favor of self-contained schools anyway. And, and so we're creating a school to address a capacity issue that isn't really thinking about all, other than it's really just focusing on capacity and not all the other ramifications around creating such a school, and the long-term promises that come out of creating such a school. Should we, in the future, decide that we want to offer our families something that is better developed within our neighborhood schools under the MTSS structure with a diversified offering and/or an option school that has a different focus that you don't have to test into it? But we will have created this in this space that precludes other options. So I'm very concerned about that, and I know I've spoken to some people, I spoke with you and Michael Tully, I believe, about the idea that perhaps, no, it was Michael Tully and some other, other people, about could we consider creating advanced learning options that people don't have to test into, but they can opt into them with the commitment, the expectation? We talk about creating expectations for people, the expectation that those students are going to rise to the level of the curriculum that is being delivered, without them having to face labeling, testing, all the things that we have identified as barriers for certain groups of people. So I'm just concerned by this dynamic that we're creating for ourselves that's locking us into a model that I'm not sure we all philosophically agree to, and is locking, I think, some of our highly capable families into a model that we've heard them express that they don't necessarily want such self-contained environments for their students. So I raise that. My other concern is that I still have concerns about the special ed language, and I know you referenced that in And I know you referenced that in one of the meetings and I've talked to Wyatt Jesse about that. And I do want to see that cleaned up somehow. And he has assured me that he will work on that. So, I hope to see something soon enough that we can get it out and vet it. And really, my mind is that I know we have very complex procedures in other places about how we're going to place our students with IEPs. And so, I just want to make sure that we make this language very simple and reference the appropriate places for parents to do the deep dive. Because our special ed, our student, our parents of special ed students tend to be willing to do the deep dive. And I don't want them having to try and reconcile a bunch of documents that look inconsistent because that's confusing and I think ultimately causes us to have to spend a lot more time explaining how all these documents work together when maybe we should just point them to the one document that we're really relying on.
And just to that point, we have been working with special education. They've been doing a lot of work around creating a more of a family-friendly guide to kind of navigate the process in a way that I think will just do a much better job than any context we could provide in our student assignment plan. So, the idea of keeping things minimal and then having a clear reference point, we are working on that.
Okay, so to the extent that if this document is just the board's instruction to the district on how we want to move forward, let's make that as concisely stated as possible so that if parents are reading it, they know they are to be referred to a different document that has, is much more helpful to them in terms of understanding how their child is going to be served within our schools. And then, where is it that we explain how we cap option schools? Because we talk about our option schools as classes that we can cap, and yet I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful to us as a district in terms of balancing our capacity issues if there is some language somewhere that talks about tying those caps to the enrollment numbers of their neighboring schools, to the extent it's feasible with their populations. So, or with what it is that they're trying to do within that school. Such that if a school needs small ratios based upon that population, obviously, we wouldn't want to be tying it to outside capacity issues. But if there isn't that issue within the school population needing smaller amounts, should we be falsely lowering those student enrollment while letting neighboring schools get very big? Or should we be doing some type of analysis to make sure that we're raising up the caps on the option schools so that they balance out? That's, I wonder if that exists, if it does or doesn't, where does it exist, where should it exist?
So, that doesn't exist in the student assignment plan or with any particular document that we have publicly available. The cap itself is essentially the number of classrooms multiplied by whatever the class size is for that particular grade. So, it's not a fixed number for a building or a fixed number for the program. So, all of our option schools, as we went down to lower class sizes, the cap changed. Because we have the same number of classrooms and the number of students per classroom that we could serve went down. And as we raised the number of students per classroom, that cap could go up. But essentially, the cap is based on how those schools program. How many, we call them three-up, four-up, depending on the classes they serve per grade.
But the reality of that then works out, that the schools that can't cap, that you have a guaranteed seat in, they can start to become bursting. And we can't even really offer relief through the option schools if they've been capped at a disproportionate level. So, I just, if we're not meeting it in one space, should we be meeting, you know, to the detriment of the overall picture? And can we, can we think about that, or should we think about that? I raise that, I don't know how to go forward with that discussion, but it is something that occurs to me and we talk about that. Those are my comments.
I think that's enough context for us to continue that discussion, so.
Okay, it'd be interesting to see some thoughts around that. So, it looks more fair in terms of, you have families come say, our classrooms are so big, but the option school gets, you know, this very contained environment, I missed enroll. You know, there's all sorts of things that go into that and it just doesn't, it's not helping our capacity issues.
Director Burke?
To build on what Jill had mentioned, the, I really support the idea of our option schools' caps being part of the student assignment plan, recognizing that they're a tool for student assignment, a tool for capacity, they're related to the building, they're related to the programming. So, there's multiple factors that go into it. And it feels like an important piece of transparency that when, if the community says, well, why are we waitlisted? There's a board-approved cap on that that's evaluated annually as part of our student assignment. And so, I just wanted to be on the record as thinking that's a good idea.
So, the only one concern I would have, and I guess this would, we'd have to think about any type of language with that. But if we are thinking about utilizing our option schools in other ways that could help us with our capacity challenges, we would want to build flexibility to see where we are once we go through open enrollment and near the beginning of the school year, if an option school had the ability to add a classroom. If we had to outline in the student assignment plan, that has to go through this process, what that cap was, that would be very limiting.
And that's, I didn't insist that it live here, I just was wondering where it should live.
Right, my comment was only just to state that.
Any other comments or questions? Because I have a few. Following up from Director Gary, I also have had concerns about how we outline the special ed pathways in the student assignment plan. And there have been members of the community who bring that up to us every year. And so, some suggested language has been sent to us that I can forward on to you that's more explicit about special ed students and how they are, their access to our option schools and their access to attendance area schools. So, I can send you that language. Because the feeling is that we're just not, we're not specific enough in our student assignment plan and there's not enough predictability for our special ed families. And in our, one of our conversations we had in our meetings, it was mentioned that the superintendent procedure accompanying the student assignment plan is a lengthy document and there might be some language in that that perhaps should be in the student assignment plan. It's a little bit more explicit, at least pertaining to special ed. So, if that's a place to look for some more language, then maybe that's where we should go. So, I just, like I said, I will send this language to you and then we can add it to this conversation we're having about what exactly needs to be in the student assignment plan. With all this talk about Robert Eaglestaff and possible adjustments and who is going to be there and who isn't, I'm guessing at this point, we don't really know how many students are going to be there in the fall. And I'm wondering if you have any updated projections? Because if we are talking about adding more space for Lipton Springs, if it is true that the Whitman eighth graders will be allowed to stay at Whitman because there simply will be space available, it sounds like we're talking about a pretty, a number that's in flux. And so, I don't expect you to have this answer right now. I'm just asking if you can give us some kind of update or some kind of multiple projections, different scenarios of what could happen with Robert Eaglestaff? Because it seems like we're all, there's a number of us who are trying to envision what it's going to look like. And it sounds like there's a lot of variables involved and it's hard to know how much space we're working with there.
So, we did a breakout by Feter Elementary of our current students assigned. So, I can pass that along. I did share that with Director Burke, just based off a conversation we just had. So, I just shared that today, but I will provide that to the rest of the board. I would say the, a challenge with some of the grandfathering pieces in particular, if we think about offering grandfathering for current seventh graders, that could result in unpredictability within that cohort at Eaglestaff. And that may not be able to provide a rich experience for everyone if those numbers aren't high. So, say, for instance, a small number decide to enroll at Eaglestaff most day. That would just make some of that scheduling challenging for Eaglestaff, particularly in that first year.
Yeah, I do recognize that and sort of referencing now my amendment. I think that whenever we do start a school, there always is a bit of a roll-up aspect to it. Even when we try to fully start a school, like with JAMS, it's not, not all the pieces are in place the first year. And I think that will necessarily be the case with any of our new schools, that they're going to, they're going to grow over time and they'll fill up over time. And they might not have all the resources immediately. So, that, I think that's going to happen no matter what we do. I would also like to know a little bit more about how the opening of MEANIE is going to impact McClure. McClure is a school in my district and I would like to know how many students from McClure? Because it's my understanding that some of the students who live in the downtown area, the Belltown area, are now being redirected to MEANIE and they used to go to McClure. And I have been asked about that.
Yeah, there's a small area, I don't remember offhand. I believe it was around 60 students, but I would want to check just to make sure. But I can provide you the information. There was just a small area that was included within the Lowell Attendance Area that used to go to McClure that is now moving into MEANIE.
Okay, and I'd be interested also in knowing how many of them would be eighth graders next year? Because my understanding is that that particular group of students are students who are likely to be disadvantaged students. And so, the concept of moving them away from their middle school to another middle school for their final year concerns me. And so, I'd like that to be clarified as to what kind of impact this is making. Because we haven't talked that much about McClure, we haven't talked that much about Mercer. I think they also are being impacted by some of the changes.
So, the points, the area of McClure, I do believe that did come up. That was Area 66 when we had had the boundary conversations. And there was some particular feedback around the demographics of that population that we did discuss. So, but based on the approved changes from the 16th, that area still moved into MEANIE.
Right, and so, the fine point that I want to put on this is I'd like to know how many of those would be eighth graders? Because that would, that would be, they'd be impacted by what I'm proposing. I also would like to know when Madison was, became a default option for HCC? And I don't know, I mean, was there community engagement done on this?
So, it's a recommendation to become a default option, it's not a default option yet. The recommendation here to the board is to make it a pathway. There was a focus group that Advanced Learning had been working with, parents from West Seattle, to talk about not only this particular change, but all the different pathways for West Seattle. And this was part of the recommendation of that group.
Okay, and this focus group, was it comprised of families, staff?
Yes, it was. It had staff, families on that committee, both administrator as well as teachers. And then it also had numerous parent committees. And then that, within that was diversity, looking at, also at 2E. So, that was parent engagement around that. So, that took place from spring of 2015 to, that had their ultimate recommendations right into the summer of this year, 2016. And then, they also had a larger community engagement, a couple of those and with over 100 parents in attendance with feedback, questions, engagement as well.
And then out of this came the recommendation that Madison become a default HCC pathway rather than optional?
So, there's a number of recommendations, you know, and that's, it's been, you know, obviously discussed, but the recommendation is what do they need for that? And then also, the folks do want the default, but they're option right now. So, the thing is, as Ashley was mentioning, the ability to go to Washington. But as they grow that, I mean, as we're having conversations about growing programs. And so, that's exactly what they're doing. So, right now Madison is staged next year to do six, seven, eight for highly capable. So, they're ready for that.
When you say staged, again, are you saying that this would be a mandatory assignment? Or would it be an option for those who choose not to go to Washington?
So, families who live within the Denny and Madison Attendance Area would have a guaranteed seat only at Madison if they are eligible for HCC. They would have, they would be able to apply through school choice for Washington if they wanted. But the default pathway means that that's their only guaranteed seat.
Knowing that Washington is at capacity, it doesn't sound like they would have a lot of opportunity with open enrollment. So, this does sound like it would be pretty much their only path would be Madison. Is that about right?
I mean, I wouldn't necessarily be able to speak to that without seeing where we ended up at open enrollment, so. I mean, Washington is, the enrollment is going to go down a little bit with the opening of MEANIE. So, I wouldn't necessarily close that off.
All right, well, if you could share with the board, maybe through a Friday memo in conjunction with the question that Director Harris asked, if you could share with us the results of the focus groups and what led to your recommendation that Madison be an assignment rather than an option for the HCC students, that would be very helpful to see how you arrived at that, what kind of community engagement you had. Thank you. And then, let's see. I noticed that there's some language that has changed in the student assignment plan around advanced learning. And it seems like spectrum and advanced learning is being used somewhat interchangeably or that spectrum is a subcategory of advanced learning. Or, to be honest, it's not perfectly clear. And so, it's not clear to, it's not clear whether spectrum still exists or whether it's being changed to something called advanced learning, which is more. Can you explain the nomenclature of these?
So, as we're looking at that document, we're saying that we're clarifying it as advanced learners as opposed to highly capable. So, underneath a department, as we talked about advanced learning, there is the designation in the student assignment plan for highly capable and then what we're calling advanced learners. There is also, as you'll see in that designation above that, is also the advanced learning opportunities, which covers both highly capable and advanced learners in itself. Those services and program are available at every single school so that we can provide those services by law, we have to do that for highly capable. And so, that's the ability to, underneath there to say advanced learner so that the students that, we're speaking of ALO, also can cover those for spectrum. And that's why you'll see that in the parentheses next to that.
Okay, I'm a little concerned, that's not super clear. So, and the fact that we now have ALO and advanced learning and they're abbreviated to ALO and AL, I'm finding the two somewhat confusing. And even though you just explained to us somewhat the difference, I'm still not totally clear on that. And, you know, you said that we offer this at all our schools. And I'm not sure that we do. Are you saying we offer advanced learning at all our schools?
Yeah, we do. We do have advanced learning, so that's a differentiated approach for them. It's different than the highly capable services which are mandated. But if the student is at any school for highly capable, we're going to have to, we are mandated to meet their needs. And so, that's what we do there. For advanced learning, we provide those services as well, in a differentiated approach and how it's constructed. I think that's, that's why I'd also say, maybe perhaps to your point, Director Peters, as we've discussed before, is that's why we have currently a project plan, which we've already started to research specifically about how we define and structure spectrum services. And so, some of that, some of the legacy documents that we have out there and the processes do need to be cleared up. And so, there is some community, parts of this community that prefer saying it's advanced learning in some schools and some prefer spectrum, even though we have spectrum-designated schools, but we're providing those same services at schools, like I was saying, across the district. And so, I'm agreeing and that's why we do want to get it cleared up. We do need to engage our stakeholders around just exactly what that is.
Where is there a definition of what services are offered for advanced learners, whether we call it advanced learning or spectrum? Because I know that it's mandated, I know in the CSIP schools are required. So, it's written down that they do. But we've heard from the community that, yeah, it's written down, but it isn't necessarily what's actually happening and it differs from school to school and it seems to be at the, you know... And it seems to be at the, you know, the, the principals who decide what that looks like. So where do we have it written, what it's supposed to look like, what it does look like, so that we can tell our parents, yes, we do have this, this is what you can expect?
Some basic definitions are on our website. And I think, again, I feel very fortunate to be in front of you to know that we have a work plan to address this, because I, I can't sit here and defend something that it does need absolutely that work. I think things have changed over time. And so, you know, inheriting situations where there is some level of inconsistency in how they're using the definition, we do provide those services. And we no longer have things like self-contained spectrum at the elementary sites. So that's some of the things that happened. Those are the things that we can reflect. But as also, as we move forward, what do folks want that to look like and how should it be defined?
All right. And then my, regarding Decatur, I think this is, it sounds like it's a conversation that we need to have about what that should look like. And, you know, I, I, I think what Director Gary said is, is something to be considered about how we start up a school like that. And perhaps there's something more creative we could be doing over there. And so perhaps Jill and I should have a conversation. This also relates to what Director Burke is proposing regarding Cascadia. So somewhere between the three of us and with, you know, staff, maybe we can come up with something that, that would make sense and, and meet, and meet all the needs that we're trying to meet. Do we know, I know there was a survey that was done of Cascadia parents, I think, and Thornton Creek parents. Do we know if there's, there's a, an interest in developing an HCC school at Decatur? Either within the community, that's the geographic community or the HCC community?
Yes, that was the most preferred option of all the different scenarios outlined as part of the survey, creating one there. And, you know, we have gotten feedback around families saying that Cascadia is too big. It's our largest elementary school. Families have raved about the, the services provided, the instruction, the leadership there. But that's not necessarily what every family desires for their student to have an experience that big, in a school that big. Decatur also has its own cafeteria, its own gym, its own library. Those families would not have to share the space with Thornton Creek. And Cascadia, again, because of its size, is, physically can only seat 660, meaning that those shared spaces are going to continue to have pressure if there is more than that many students sharing the library, the gym, the gymnasium, the cafeteria.
Okay. Could you please send out to us the survey results again? I know you've done it before.
Yeah.
But if you could send it out now, in the context of the student assignment plan, that'd be very helpful.
Sure.
Thank you. Director, I thought I saw Director Harris. Did you have your hand up? And then Director Gary? And then Director Petu?
I was so hoping we could have this conversation offline. But why is it that the HCC pathway was only serviced, surfaced, excuse me, a couple of weeks ago? And when we say that Madison is ready to go, again, I don't understand where the training is in place, et cetera, what we're offering. And, and then I find out, given a comment that was just made, that we're going to ask parents what we want things to look like. And, and I'm really pleased to hear that statement, but it feels a little late. So I, I continue to be concerned and confused about how we deal with advanced learning in this city.
So I'll get a moment to clarify when I was talking about the question from Director Peters. It's in reference to spectrum and advanced learning, and that's not the highly capable. So that was, those are two different things that we're discussing there. The highly capable services for the pathway for Madison, that process had taken over a year, that had over 100 different people engaging and working through it. That information, again, we'll send it back out. We'll move, move forward with that as we did do the engagement. The thing I'm talking about is the work plan in, in relations to specifically spectrum, as it's commonly referred to, which is different than the highly capable, that we're gonna go out and do stakeholder involvement with them and students and a whole bunch of other folks. So it's, I'm glad I can separate, those are two separate things. One has happened in the past here with Madison. And then the other one is relates to spectrum or advanced learning services across the district. And then I'll also follow up just quickly about the training. We have already engaged the staff at Madison through training, both at the national level. Also, they've gone for a week retreat through the UW's Robinson Center. And then also they've gone off and visited some of our highly capable services at our middle school sites to further learn from them. So they, they have been going through the training. They're ready. They've been providing those services. There's gonna continue to roll that up so that we go all the way six, six through eight.
Director Petu?
This is for Wyatt Jesse. I know we met a couple of months ago and we talked about the criteria of actually getting more students of color into advanced learning or HCC. And I haven't, you know, you don't need to answer me right now, but you can probably send me an email on a Friday to let me know exactly where are we with that, when we talked about qualification of our students to be able to enter into advanced learning or HCC. And I guess, I like the idea that Director Gary have said, that, you know, getting a school where kids do not have to take testing, but allow them to be part of a program that actually, and see where they land at. Because not every, you can, testing doesn't normally tell you exactly whether kids are gifted or not, only to a certain extent. And I believe that, you know, we need to look at more opportunities to how to get more kids involved into advanced learning or HCC in order for us to see exactly what talent that a lot of these kids have. Because I know for a fact that a lot of our kids of color are not, cannot be tested by test only. A lot of them are very gifted and there's different ways of how to actually qualify them to be part of those advanced learning programs. So I'm hoping that, you know, as we continue on in that conversation, that I would see a higher percentage of kids of color being in, more involved in HCC or advanced learning. Because we, I know that there's a lot of our kids out there that actually are qualified and would benefit from all of that.
Yeah, absolutely. I can put that in a Friday memo to capture some of the things for you. Definitely Director Petu.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other? Oh, Ashley, did you wanna respond?
I just, I was wondering if you also wanted to go through the amendments? I know that they were kinda touched upon.
We can introduce your amendment.
I think that's a good idea. Sure. We can go through them sequentially. I guess mine is the first one. And mine is a carryover from the growth boundaries discussion. I first brought it out then and I decided, you know, I wanted to get more feedback. And I still would like to hear more from the various schools and communities that would be affected by eighth grade grandfathering. The idea is to let these students just matriculate, finish their, their, their middle school experience, just the, the one last year and finish off and not have to be uprooted just for that one year. And this would apply to all the schools that are affected by the, the two schools that are being opened, Meany and Robert Eaglestaff. And, you know, the more I learn about the different options here, the more I, I think that we, we have to take a look at what is, what is fair. If it, through open enrollment, certain students will be able to stay in their current school. I think specifically Whitman does have space, but the other schools might not be. So you will have a group of students who will be able to be effectively grandfathered and others that won't, unless we make a stipulation that grandfathering is allowed. Now, I know the, the negative side of this is that if, if we have the eighth graders staying where they are, or, it's something like 235 eighth graders assigned to Eaglestaff, who would have to, who might be grandfathered. If they stay where they are and not go to Eaglestaff, we might not have a full, full group of eighth graders. And so what we would have, effectively have is like a sixth and seventh grade roll-up, which we haven't really done in the past. However, that doesn't mean that it's something that we shouldn't look into. Because if we have a robust sixth grade and seventh grade population in a new school, we would still have, plus we'll have Lipton Springs there, we would still have a considerable population in that school. And so it's, it's something that, that, that could work. Parents, I had a meeting with some parents last night, and I'm hoping to have more meetings where they share their different concerns about student stability, also their concerns about all the talk about what's happening with the budget. And they're concerned that next year with, with possible dramatic cuts we may have to take, the district won't have enough resources to offer the students at the new schools the comprehensive middle school experience that they expect. And so that's why I've asked earlier for staff to explain what kind of budgeting and what kind of resources, especially the planning principles, that they have for the, in this case, the two new middle schools, Meany and Eaglestaff, so we can let our parents know exactly what they can expect. Because right now there's, there's some concern that they won't be able to have the full experience that, that first year. And so if that's the case, that, that does lend more credence to the idea of letting eighth graders stay put and finishing where they're at, where the resources do exist. So that's sort of, yeah, Ashley?
Yeah. So just, just actually one point to what you just mentioned. And that actually was really great for you to add a little bit more and have you talk through the amendment so I could get a little bit more clarity on that piece that you mentioned earlier during the night. But if, as we think about kind of where we are budget-wise, we are really gonna be limited in, in mitigation. So if we are not able to have cohorts at schools that are full, there's not gonna be the, probably as much support as we've had in the past to mitigate. So I would think actually if we did allow for grandfathering, that may have the adverse impact of us not being able to mitigate if we, if we don't have that full cohort for the school. So just kinda thinking through some of the other different potential implications of that, too.
Right, I understand. So there's like lots of different models we could run on this. And I feel like we have, have a lot of variables, you know, up in the air on, on this. So anyway, that was, I was just trying to flesh out the sort of pros and cons of, of what I'm, I'm proposing. And again, this is based on historically what the district has done and the concerns we had from the community. There's people from the JAMS, the Jane Addams Middle School community, who have brought to my attention the fact that Jane Addams was not done as a roll-up. There was sixth, seventh, and eighth were all taken out of Hamilton and Eckstein, I think it was, and brought to JAMS. And how that, it ultimately worked out, but it was a difficult first year. And I've been told by more than one person, including the PTA there, that it was especially hard on the eighth graders to have to leave Hamilton and Eckstein just for their eighth grade year. And so I do remember the testimony from then, and this is something that parents have brought up again. So that's it for that first amendment. Now, the next one was from Directors Burke and Pinkham.
I'll, I'll speak briefly on, on this amendment. And recognizing that it just was submitted and posted this morning, and so staff did not have a chance to really vet it or do any analysis on it. But I wanted to be very deliberate and get it part of the record to give us the full month to, or, you know, essentially till January 4th, to get the public dialogue, to give staff time to, to weigh in. This amendment really relates to, to the Robert Eaglestaff building. When we look at North Seattle and we look at capacity and we look at some of the testimony we heard today, the Eaglestaff building is the eye of the storm. And when we, you know, it has five elementary feeder schools plus HCC plus Lipton Springs. And the feeder schools are guaranteed assignment. And HCC is guaranteed assignment. And so the concern is, should there be growth, this could potentially put a lot of pressure on Lipton Springs. And we also, as a result of this, we have Whitman Middle School, which ends up under-enrolled as compared to Robert Eaglestaff by a couple of hundred students. And even over the course of the five-year projection, doesn't catch up. It does grow, but it never gets up to the level of Robert Eaglestaff. And so if we compare that to, for example, Hamilton, I believe Hamilton has three feeder schools plus HCC plus language immersion. And so the more non-feeder school, non-attendance area schools or non-attendance area programs, functions, whatever we call them, we put into a middle school, we have to scale back the other pieces. And so the, the purpose of this amendment is to take two of the, of the feeder schools, Greenwood Elementary, which is to the west of Aurora, and move it to Whitman and Broadview Thompson K8, and also move that back to Whitman. And when you look at it on the map, both of them theoretically could, could make good sense. I've heard feedback from the community that that would be a positive thing. And so the idea is putting this out there to understand what are the unintended consequences of it? Because it, it, ultimately it has the intent of trying to balance the numbers between Whitman, Eaglestaff, improve the long-term viability for Lipton Springs. And the discussion today, whether it's 10 classrooms, whether it's 14, we wanna make sure that we're not precluding the ability for that program to grow and be sustainable. So that was the intent behind this amendment. And there's definitely gonna be more dialogue at my community meetings or other opportunities to engage the, the public. I've reached out to PTAs at both affected elementaries. And I'm trying to set up designated times to meet with them. And, you know, I'm enthusiastic with, you know, trying to collaborate with Director Pinkham as well to make sure that we've, we're balancing, you know, as we span schools in the different director districts, that we're, you know, taking a really deliberate approach to it.
Would you like to also speak to the next amendment?
Sure. I'll, I'll speak to the next amendment. The next amendment is also a discussion topic that's put out there. And recognizing, this is, the, next one is, relates to Cascadia. And currently it's entirely housed in the Lincoln Building. It's quite large, it's quite full, as you indicated. And the student assignment plan has the directive to take that and pull the, the students that are in the Eckstein area less Wedgewood and put them into the Decatur Building. So I've heard from community that this is a great idea, and I've heard from community that this is, you know, that, that the Cascadia cohort should stay together. I've also heard loud and clear that it could be a real challenge fitting into the new building. And so this amendment is a way to bring the dialogue forward a little bit further, to understand the pros and cons of that, to understand the cost ramifications of having to put portables on site, which is, sounds like a very likely probability with, you know, costs and risks associated with it. And make sure that that's part of the public dialogue when we go to make this decision. So whichever way we go, we're doing it with a, a level of deliberate transparency.
And so one thing I just wanna note to that, outside of the costs, I think Flip had weighed in a little bit when you reached out about this amendment earlier today, is that the, we'd have to go through a process, likely they even placed the portables, that's not guaranteed. And so that would just put us in a little bit of a bind if, if we did go through that and weren't able to place the portables.
Right. Can you help me understand what the time duration is for that process and how much we can front-load it to give some certainty about that?
Richard Best, Director of Capital Projects and Planning. We'd need a decision, you know, in January, which we'd anticipate, so that we can then begin working with the city of Seattle. We did in our drawings when we submitted for permit, indicate areas that we were looking at placing on portables. We, however, did not take that bid alternate for the placement of those portables because it required some construction of retaining walls. So we'd have to look at either reassessing and seeing if we could do the work regarding the retaining walls, and then placing the portables in the original planned location, or designating a new location and placing those portables. Proximate cost for placing a portable is 160,000 bucks. And that includes the technology and the furniture that we provide, so, yep.
And thank you for that. And just to clarify publicly as well, this one also was just submitted today, has not had staff financial analysis incorporated. We'll, we'll get that worked on at, over the next week or so, and, well, whenever you can work that in and have it formally added to the, to the document. And, and just to clarify, one other... And, and just to clarify, one other trade-off for this amendment is the, the cost and impact of moving the entire cohort to the Cascadia site with the associated challenges around portables and, and increased class size. And then the flip side is much like Director Geary talked about of the cost, challenge, and uncertainty of, of spinning up a new school on a short timeline, getting a planning principle, staffing, you know, all of the things that are associated with that. And so I think it's, both of them have pros and cons, and the hope is that this, this amendment will help balance out that dialogue.
Okay, and then the final amendment is also one of mine, and I touched on it earlier, and that is to make the, I meant to Decatur an option, an optional path, rather than, I guess, a default path for the north end HCC. And this would be following the pattern of Fairmount Park and Ingram High School, in that it would relieve capacity issues from the original school, but it would offer families the option rather than the mandatory assignment. And so this would only work if people were willing to go there, and, you know, I'm mindful of the sorts of issues that Director Geary brought up. But, so mine is a variation on theme, and I would like to take a look at the survey results again, to understand whether there is an appetite for this. I did bring this forth last month, and there wasn't, I have received interest from various members of the community about this, and when they didn't see it listed, attached to the student assignment plan, they wondered. And so I brought it back out again, so we can have this conversation, so we can hear more from the community on this, and then we can decide, you know, between now and when we vote on this, what is the best way to approach the capacity challenges of Cascadia, and how to make the best use of Decatur. So I think our various amendments are all part of the same puzzle, and hopefully we'll come to a good, a good solution there. Thank you. So I'm kind of hoping that we're done with this topic for now, so that we can move along. I can see it's just past 10 o'clock, and I can see everybody's getting a little bit tired.
Thank you again, Ms. Ashley.
But thank, yes, thank you, thank you, Ashley, and, and your, and your team, and Flip, for all the work you've been doing. All right, so we're down to the last few items. We knew that was going to be the, the big item, and that is item number nine, BTA for EC Hughes Elementary School renovation project value engineering report state funding assistance. This went through Ops. Would you like to complete the story on the, what happened at Ops, Director Blandford?
Oh, sorry. This was...
This was considered in the Ops Committee on November 7th and moved forward for approval.
Okay. I'm just going to also point out that the next item seems like it's in the same...
I would be more than happy to indicate that all three items went through Ops Committee on November the 17th and were moved forward for approval.
All right, thank you. Mr. Best.
So the EC Hughes Elementary School value engineering report is required to be viewed by the Board of Directors for state matching fund assistance. It's part of our D7 form submittal to OSPI to receive state matching funds. Ming analysis, performed the value engineering for EC Hughes Elementary School back in May of 2016. They made a recommendation of 32 items that the design team should consider. 13 had potential cost savings, six of those that had cost savings were accepted for modifications. The design team in consult, consultation with the project manager believes that there's probably about $230,000 worth of savings. Value engineering, as I, as I have articulated to the Operations Committee on several occasions, is kind of just a brainstorming process. You look at, you bring in outside architects and engineers to look at the design that's being proposed by the firm that's been selected, see if there are other things that they should consider, so. So you have the report in front of you, and we're seeking your approval. Open it up to questions.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Yes.
And that is the BTA for award contract K1267 for master planning services to Vassetti Architects for BEX5 capital levy planning. As we noted, it went through Ops for approval.
The, it is time to begin our BEX5 capital levy planning, even though we will not be voting on this as a community until February of 2019. In the contract, we do have a project schedule, and I want to draw that to your attention. But this is approximately a year-long effort. We are going to be looking at 18 schools rather intensely, and then we have left three placeholders where we do not know which school will be named, but we know that the board, the public, teaching and learning capacity may request that we analyze a school as well. And so we've got three to-be-determined placeholders in there. We are anticipating that Vassetti Architects will complete this effort in September of 2017. We will then begin a programmatic environmental impact statement that will need to be complete by September of 2018. That process takes approximately one year, and then the board can make a decision as to which schools they would like to move forward as part of BEX5. We are looking at more schools than we anticipate that you will move forward on. The schools are listed in the background information. I will note that there's one additional school that we've already completed this work on, and that is McGilbra Elementary School in the central region, Director Blandford. And so just need this approval to begin this effort, so that we remain on track for having schools that you can consider for BEX5 levy in September of 2018.
Thank you. Are there any, oh, Director Harris.
We heard during public testimonies some pretty provocative allegations about conflicts of interest. Can you address those? Did you hear that?
I, I did. I would not say that there's a conflict of interest. Lauren McConaughey is previous chair for the Landmarks Committee. He brings great insight to Seattle public schools, and offers that concerning our older schools, and whether they would be landmarked, potentially landmarked, what would be the landmark considerations that we should think about. I think that's actually a resource that will help in the planning of these schools for BEX5. I don't see it as a conflict of interest at all. I will note, and you're aware, that we are seeking exemption from landmark status, but I will also say that the exemption that we're seeking would give the board the direction to direct capital projects to consider that building a landmark. And so then, you know, we're just trying to give you the flexibility to make that determination.
Director Burke.
Would it be a correct assessment to say that this work is really planting the seeds for a levy that's going to help us prioritize buildings? It's going to be hundreds of millions of dollars of ask to our taxpayers?
Yes, that would be a correct assessment.
Let it be known, this is important work.
Yeah, and the schools that are recommending that we look at, that are listed in the background information, have had facilities, conditions assessments done, educational adequacy assessments done. Low score is better. These are the highest-scoring schools in the districts. We thought we needed to look at those, given the work that we've already done through the Ming analysis study, the OSPI study and survey documents that address educational adequacy. That's how these schools were selected, so.
And along that line, is it, is it a foregone conclusion, or is it essentially a down-select process from these schools for what goes on to the BEX5 project list? Or is this one of multiple factors?
We are going to have probably multiple conversations with you all to give you information so you can determine what will go on the BEX5 list. We need to provide you with the information from a study standpoint, so you can make that decision. We also need to include probably a broader list in our programmatic environmental impact statement, so we can have that work done, knowing that probably every project will not move forward.
Brilliant, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So now we'll move on to the final item. Extend contract terms and amend contract amounts for furniture procurement for 2016, bid number B09501. This also went through Operation Committee November 17th for approval, I understand. Was there anything else to add?
So we are looking for a one-year extension of current existing contracts that we have in place with our furniture vendors. And I am going to introduce Anita Hornby, who is our furniture fixture and equipment manager, to talk about this effort and this work that she's seeking approval, that we're seeking approval for, so. Anita.
So we have this coming up here, 2017, about the same level of work that we had in 2016. So in order to be able to facilitate the same improvements for the furniture standpoint, we looked to our con, existing contracts with our vendors and asked to see if they were interested in extending those contracts with us as a way to facilitate good pricing. These contracts are not only eligible for our capital projects, but they also provide our school districts with the ability to draw on that when they need school-funded or PTA-funded support in providing furniture. So it's not just capital project, but the whole district that is able to draw on this. And in addition, these contracts are set up so that it's at our discretion as far as the amount of furniture that we're purchasing from any of the vendors. So we're not obligated to take advantage of the full contract amount that's set out. It's discretionary.
Are there any questions or comments? Director Geary.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Oh, sure.
For staying so late. I would like to think that we would have noted and amended the agenda to put you earlier so you didn't have to sit through so much, but I appreciate you being here.
Director Burke.
Since, since you were kind enough to stay so late, I have one quick question.
It's fine.
In the, in the fiscal impact revenue source, it's indicated here that purchases will be made from various budgets. Are those all capital budgets?
No, that's, a part of it is, it is a, a contract that's set up to, for the whole district to be able to take advantage of. So it could be general fund, takes an opportunity, it could be school budgets. But we do set it up with those amounts assigned as a projection, so an estimate that might address general fund purchases or school purchases.
I guess I'm just trying to understand what we as a board are approving. Are we approving purchase authority up to this amount from either budget, or...
Yes, it's not...
Since we've kind of got a budget crisis going on, or a budget...
Right.
...thing we're looking down the throat of, I'm...
So it's, these are not associated with a budget, but they're associated with the estimated amount of procurement required across the, the projects that are known, with a contingent amount for school purchase, PTA general fund purchase, based on historical information. So it is contracts with the estimated max amount per that vendor, but we're not obligated to purchase that full amount. But this gives us the latitude to be able to offer the value that, that public bid brings to getting good pricing across the district outside of capital projects.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Okay. No, I don't think there's any more questions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So before we close out the, the meeting, Superintendent Nylund would like to say a few words.
Well, thank you all for your patience and stamina tonight, and including our student from Garfield. I don't think any student has stayed this late.
Did they tell you you could go home?
Don't you have homework?
Yeah.
Does Superintendent write you a note for all these assignments you didn't get in?
That's right. I would like to let the, the board know that I'll be out of the district the next three workdays. Stephen will be here, so it is possible to go to China for the weekend, so I'm doing the Confucius Institute, representing Washington, and no cost to the district, and part of our dual-language program, so.
Awesome.
Okay. Well, have a safe trip, and if, without any further comments or questions, I call this meeting adjourned at what looks like to be 10:16 PM. Thank you, everybody, and have good holidays.
Oh, yeah, have a good holiday.